Good evening, I would like to welcome everybody to the Fridley School Board Meeting on February 16th, 2021, 7:30. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I will ask for a motion to start the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Onward to Dr. Heil for Spotlight on Recognition.
Good evening Chair Perito and Board Members. This evening, I'm delighted to share Employee of the Month for February of 2021. Kim N. Hope has been a longtime employee of the Tiger Club Child Care. Kim has always been open-minded and adaptable. She also works to ensure that all students and staff are cared for. She goes above and beyond to make sure that everyone knows what is expected of them. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Kim has consistently worked to create strong relationships with students, teachers, the principal, and parents while managing the Critical Kids Care Site at Stevenson. She's also been an integral part of the Tiger Club's return to before and after-school care, which is a core function of the Community Ed Department. Kim has weathered many transitions in her career and she has always, she always comes at each situation with a positive attitude. And that was written by Director Stephen Keeler. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you so much. Next, I would like to do a recognition of the paraprofessional paraeducators. Whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 para-professionals, providing services in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational success. And whereas the support and services provided by the para-professionals are integral to our student achievement, resulting in even better, more effective Minnesota schools. And whereas the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that the para-professionals play in ensuring educational success. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contributions of para-professionals during Para-professionals' Recognition Week, January 25th through January 31st, 2021. Now, therefore, the Governor of Minnesota has proclaimed the week of January 25th through January 31st, 2021, as Paraprofessional Recognition Week. So we want to thank you, all of those. Next, we will have the Nutritional Services and Renee Arbogast.
Hello, thank you for letting me present tonight. My name is Renee Arbogast. I am the Director of Nutritional Services here for Fridley Public Schools. And I just kind of want to provide you guys with an update and some of the things we've been doing throughout the pandemic to help feed our community. Just a quick little overview of the department, and I'll kind of go into these a little bit further in detail as I go through the slides. We currently have 22 Nutritional Services team members. There's 20 cook/cook manager positions, and then there is two district staff who really are coordinating everything that we are doing. We continue to utilize a lot of locally grown produce, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we continue to be very committed to our students in making sure that we are providing them with the most nutritious meals they can, so that they can be the best while they're learning, whether at home or in school. Then just going to talk a little bit about what we're doing to help engage our students, expand what we're providing our students for meal options, as well as some recipe development. All the pictures you're going to see in here are current staff that I currently have working for me within the department. This particular one is Susan Baker, and she is making chili that we have frequently sent home in our home-delivered meals, as well as our meal pickup and serve in-school to our students. Several things that we continue to do throughout the pandemic is we continue to purchase as much locally grown produce as possible. This year, we were purchasing apples from Pine Tree Apple Orchard, and we purchased about 6,300 pounds of apples from them this year. And all of our students got to enjoy some Sweet Tangos, they got to have some Harlequins, some Honey Crisps, some crab apples, a variety of things that you would see that some of our students may not normally consume. Besides purchasing from there, we also purchase from Good Acre, which is a farm hub, and they use a lot of different organic and locally grown farmers. There, we purchased watermelons in the fall, we purchased peppers, tomatoes, radishes, delicata squash, and onions to use either on our serving lines or for our recipes. Besides purchasing from Good Acre, we'll also order from our commodity program, and we really highlight those fresh vegetables and fresh fruits that we can get throughout the year from them. Besides produce, all of our milk is, comes from a farm that is just north of the cities. So we try to keep all of that within a very tight frame within the metro area. Uh-oh, what did I do? Okay. And then we're also looking at different ways to expand the program. We're looking at partnering with some other school districts for next year to help expand this and be able to work more with our partners, as well as look at purchasing some meat items and things like that. This particular pitcher is Lynn Peterson. She is cutting up apples for our apple crisp that we sent home with our meal pickups. Besides our purchasing items, we've done a lot with recipe development and taste testing. Even throughout the pandemic, we have been trying different menu items within our meal pickup kits. We normally have regular chili. We also did a Carolina chili, which is made with diced chicken and peppers and things like that, and had some heat to it, and got a lot of really positive feedback, not only from our students, but also the staff who tried it. We also did apple, blueberry, peach crisps, things like that, to kind of really highlight those items and let people know that you can still have fruits with that dessert item. The pitcher you see here is our apple French toast bake, where we used fresh apples and local eggs and bread to be able to make an entree item, and we topped it off with some caramel sauce. This one just recently went out in meal bags, and we're going to put it on the menu to try when kids come back to school. And then one of the other things there is our tachibol. We really try hard to allow as much customization as possible so that we can keep our students engaged in what we're doing in nutritional services. So the tachibol is really using our taco meat and queso and tater tots, things like that, stuff that you would see when you go out to a restaurant. And that's really kind of what we've looked at when we've done recipe development, is what's happening in Chipotle, what's happening in Chick-fil-A, what's happening at Panera, and really trying to pull in some of those ideas to help keep our middle school and high schoolers engaged with what we're doing in nutritional services. This particular pitcher here is of our enchilada bake. And this is another completely from scratch item that we make here and we send out in our meal kits, but also we serve at the middle and high school, and we served it last week Friday for the first time at the elementary schools, and got a lot of really positive feedback from it. Besides working on our entree items, we are continuing to work on breakfast items. We're continuing to work on grain items. We did some blueberry scones, we've done blueberry muffins, all of those kinds of things, as well as we're experimenting with smoothie bowls, using that yogurt, using that produce, so that our students will get more of those kinds of items in our meals. Like I said earlier, we have about, we have 22 team members. In this particular pitcher, you will see Nadia and Heather over at Hayes, and they're serving the students. They all are very passionate and very committed to what we do. And they are very adaptive as we continue to transition between in-person learning, meal pickup, hybrid learning. They've become very flexible to be able to meet those needs and make sure that our students are getting the best nutritious meals possible, while encouraging them to try something new and different. And what you'll see in these two pitchers here are us getting ready for meal distribution. When we are doing meal pickup here at the high school, we would pretty much fill half the cafeteria with bags, getting them ready to go out with our five-day meal bags. And it takes them quite a while, but they are all very passionate, very committed to make sure that our students are well-fed, as well as that our parents understand that this is not traditional pizza, things like that, that we really try hard to cook as much as possible from scratch, from Quick Scratch, to kind of help our students understand what food is. Some of the additional things that we do, like I said, Scratch and Quick Scratch, we do a lot of items from scratch. I would say about 50% of our menu is from there, is from scratch. We're also hoping to get back to making our own pizzas and things like that, once we have kids in person. We continue to adapt every time we change how we have kids in school, and continuing to kind of hone in those service models so that we are getting our community and our students meals that they need. We continue with our curbside pickup three times a week, both two evenings and daytime. As well as we really, you know, ask our families, we ask our students, what do you want to see? You know, what other things can we do to help make sure that we're meeting our nutritional needs of our students, but we're also providing them with meal items that they're accustomed to, but also encouraging them to try something different. And final thing I wanted to kind of highlight was that breakfast and lunch this year is free for all students, regardless if they're on free and reduced, thanks to the federal government and their waivers. So it's important that they understand that. I think the biggest thing I wanted to talk about was just how many meals we've served. We have done 278,000 meals since March. So you'll see up there how many breakfasts and how many lunch we did. And then also, we also included our super snack in there, which is our after-school snack program, that's got some pretty substantial items in it. So it's taken a lot of creativity and a lot of hard work to be able to get that many meals out to our community. You'll see in that pitcher there, just one of our meal bags. You can kind of see the variety of things in there. There is salad in there, there's, you know, hamburger, there's french fries. Yes, there is some pizza in there, but we know that that's one of our kid favorites. We've got hoagie buns, things like that in there. So just to really kind of give people an idea of the variety that we put into our meal bags every single week. Just a couple of things that we continue to work on. We continue to be creative. We continue to try and engage with our students as much as possible. We're hoping to try some different Thai meal items with them this spring yet. We're also looking for some African dishes to kind of help incorporate that and kind of bring it a little bit more into focus with the kind of students that we have here to try and meet their, some of the items that they may be seeing at home. We continue to invest in our team, doing a lot of training with culinary skills and how to utilize our equipment. And the biggest thing is just focus on that nutrition and giving them meal items, giving them vegetables, giving them things, and encouraging them to try different items so that they can be their best in the classroom. Thank you for your time, and these are the last two pitchers of my staff. This is Beth, who is making salads, and Jolly, who is dishing up our orange chicken for one night for meal distribution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I have a question. Don't go away. We can tell that you're really passionate about this, and I appreciate that. As a mom who has kids here and have seen and prepared some of those meals at pickup, thank you. You guys are doing a tremendous job, and it is appreciated. The variety is awesome. What is Quick Scratch?
Quick Scratch is where we take maybe like a pizza crust. So we'll take and we'll use a pizza crust, and then we'll make our own sauce, and we'll top it, and we'll kind of make, put cheese and things like that on it, so it's on 100% from scratch. Whereas like our enchilada bake, we will get all the individual ingredients and we prepare it all on-site.
Gotcha.
So it's kind of a combination, and it kind of helps us to give them a little bit more variety.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate the presentation and the fact that even with pandemic, you are still very, I mean, very helpful and resourceful to the community. So I think we've been hearing about the food delivery program and how, in spite of all the challenges, it never stopped and reached beyond the school borders to the homes of so many families, so we're really thankful for that. Question, as nutrition services have become healthier, like more vegetables and fruits, we know in the beginning, these were not popular with children, and they used to be very wasteful. How is that now? Have they adapted more? That's one question. And another question is just the ethnic part also. I really appreciate that you're looking at the diversity of our students and to be inclusive and to provide variety, which is also very helpful. So how is that coming along?
To answer your first question, we will struggle with fruits and vegetables at times. We definitely encourage them to try new items. I mean, they obviously have to take at least a half cup of fruit or vegetable. So there are some days that, yes, that does end up in the trash, but we really try to encourage them to try something different. I do notice that at the elementary level, we're seeing them eat more fresh fruits and vegetables. We're seeing them eat that produce. Whereas the high schoolers, they're harder because they've got some of those habits already set. So we're really trying to focus on those little kids to kind of help them establish those healthy eating habits. So it's always going to be a work in progress, but we definitely do try to offer a variety of fresh fruit, dried fruit, canned fruit. All of our vegetables are either fresh or frozen. We don't use any canned for that. So we really try to kind of focus on those flavorful, as well as looking at our flavor profiles, so that we can add spices and seasoning and things like that, as well as we let kids add hot sauce to it and stuff like that. I mean, this year, it's a little bit different because they can't customize quite as much, but that's really kind of our focus. And then to your second question, we have done some surveying with some of the high school students about what kinds of things they would like to see. So we've really tried to kind of focus the results from that onto other recipes that we could be able to try. And in there, there was more Mexican, there was more Thai. And so we also were looking for some more of those traditional African dishes that we may be able to make in a larger quantity, just because we want our menus to represent our community and our students. So it'll be a work in progress for us.
I'll say that I really appreciate the work that you do on social media. It's really nice to see the images. My son is the pickiest child you will ever meet. And when I go through the list, "Do you want this, 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 or this?", he'll say, "I want this, but only if you make it like school makes it." So it's nice to see kind of what it looks like and what he gets excited about. And there are times where I'm like, well, can I reach out and get that recipe? Because he gets really excited about that. Is there an opportunity for parents to contact you and say, "How did you make this? Because I can't get him to eat at home."
Absolutely. And we kind of get that with like our delicata squash and some of those other kinds of things. Absolutely. If there's something that, you know, children really like, we can share that. We'll kind of pare it down, because when we cook, we cook for, you know, 500 or 600. So, I mean, we can definitely do that. You just need to reach out to us. We're more than happy to share.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Renee, I just want to say thanks to you and Sarah and your group, the way you have pivoted and turned and changed, and how you, you created meal like you're at a restaurant. And you're creating a meal like for a family of hundreds. So I just want to say it has been exceptional, your compliments about your food all the time compared to other districts, and just hats off to your team. So, thank you.
Very impressive.
Thank you. Thank you. We're excited to see what happens next. Okay, and I'm sorry, Mr. Carver, you need to follow that up.
I got this. I got this.
You got this. Career Pathway is at the middle school.
Now that we're all hungry.
I know.
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow. But thank you guys for having us. I'm not here by myself. Well, thank you. Oh, that's great. Yeah, thank you guys for having us and hearing a little bit about what Fridley Middle School does and kind of where we're headed. Well, then you'll notice about us three that we're all new to the district. But we also have a similar passion for helping our students get to the next step, whatever that step is, and figuring out what that step is, and helping our kids navigate through that. So I'll start. Introduce myself. I'm Jason Carverham, the Assistant Principal at the middle school. I'm originally from Kalamazoo, Michigan. I've been here in the cities for about 17 years, but I am all Michigan. But one thing that we do is show where we're showing up on the compass. So I also share that. Usually, I'm centered. And when I first got here, I was nervous. Then I seen Dr. Cochran, and she kind of made me feel a little bit more calm. So I'm also excited. So I have a foot in the excited, the feeling quadrant, which is excited. So Julia.
We've got it on here. I'm Julia Evers. I teach college and career readiness. This is my first year in Fridley, but my eighth year teaching. My previous experience is in elementary, also some instructional coaching. Today, I am showing up in the feeling. I'm really excited. I love having the students back, the energy, getting to see their faces. I'm recognizing some of your last names and putting faces to your babes, and I love them so much. So thank you for having us.
I am Brianna Ives. I am the Media Clerk for Fridley Middle School. I have a master's degree in Library and Information Science with an emphasis in Archives and Records Management. However, at my core, I am a product of Minneapolis's IB program. I attended Northeast Middle School and the Middle Years Program, and graduated from Patrick Henry from the EB diploma program. And from that, it's given me sort of a sense of community and accountability and striving towards educational excellence. And I am centered sort of between thinking and acting tonight. Thank you.
All right. We changed these slides up a little bit, so excuse us if we fumble a little bit, but I think we'll be good. So thinking about this generation of students that we're working with, they have, they receive the most, they have the most access to information than previous generations. So it's kind of our duty to make sure that they're getting the right information and the right information that's tailored for their path. So we call that accessible excellence. And what that means to us is that every student at Fridley Middle School will be able to make an informed decision about their future and opportunities as a student. Some of those opportunities Julia is going to speak about. But one thing that comes to mind is resume building. So how can a middle schooler build their resume? And, you know, we've talked a little bit about that. And what we can do right now for our students is give them leadership, opportunities, volunteer opportunities, community service. Through our Tiger Grit, they can start building those character traits that can go onto their resume. So by the time they get into high school, we can check off some of those boxes. And they're, at least have a step forward or a step ahead in the direction wherever they're trying to go. And we understand when we're talking about going to that next step, it's not always or necessarily to college. So how can we get more people that are not in those areas so that we can kind of shine a light on them? And we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. And you guys see the websites that we've created. But now I'm going to hand it off to Julia, and she's going to talk a little bit more about college and career readiness.
All right. Thank you, Jason. So the program is administered through the Minnesota Office of Higher Education. The curriculum was developed and research-based. We do lessons that study student identity and drive. What motivates them, what gets them out of bed, what gets them excited and happy. I love that I get to brag because I love my job, and it is my drive, because my passion is kids and working with kids. So it's awesome that I have such strong examples to show them. We really dig into their interests and their activities, which also go in with learning techniques. And how can we translate that into a career that they can be excited about, that they can be happy about going to every single day? Also, options beyond high school. As Mr. Carver shared, it's not always college, but we do study all the different options. Maybe they want to go into military, a community college, technical college, college/university, or apprenticeship, or straight into the workforce. We want to give them all options and let them know what they can do. Some class activities we've done. The students have gotten so creative, especially with getting more online, doing things digitally. And so they designed their own courses that they would like to take. So actually, Aiden designed this one. He created a coding class, something that he would be interested in. We also had a scholar design this advertisement for a basketball skills camp. Came up with lots of different options and things that they could do, prizes they could win. Clearly, our design courses are paying off as well, because this looks really cool. Other things we do with our eighth-grade students to prepare them for high school and beyond is we look into different high school options. Of course, I push Fridley. We have such cool IB options. Getting credits. We also talk about the different courses that the high school offers that go along with those career interests and activities. So how can we align their goals with what they're doing to help them plan for their future? We also take a career interest survey, so aligns all those things they like to do with all of the options that go along with that. Quite often, the students are like, "I don't want to do that." And I was like, "Well, good thing we all have freedom. We're all people. You can still look into what you want." And then also choose their best fit for after-high school graduation. Something fun that we did this year is, obviously, we had to be creative with getting people to talk to our students, so we created a virtual career week. The students created the questions, so we told them who was coming and what their career was. And so then they created the questions, and we interviewed them. We created a website so the children and families could access all of the interviews at any time. This year, we are hoping, well, future plans. We want to really partner with local businesses and get them in to talk to the kids because we're trying to build up our community. Our children are future, the future of this community. And so how can we introduce them to what we already have here? I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Carver.
All right. So I can't take credit for this website that you're about to see. Neura Hussain with the Get Ready Program designed this. She's kind of took our ideas and put it to this website. And it's a beautiful website. That's going to be up here shortly. Just a couple highlights. There's over 200 colleges that students can go in and check out. You click on any college, and it'll take you right to their website, where families can do research with their kids, or they can do it through a class. where families can do research with their kids, or they can do it through a class if they would like. And it's colleges from, anywhere from the Ivy League to community colleges, two-year colleges, to HBCU colleges, and over two hundred colleges, so. Oh, okay.
Can I ask a question in the meantime?
Oh, yes, please.
When you were talking about the virtual career fair, how did you find the individuals that the kids asked the questions to? And what sort of jobs did they represent? What, who were they, what were they talking about?
Yeah. So, do you want to go, or I can?
We can kind of go back and forth.
Okay. Well, between myself, Julia, Mr. Thomas, who's the design teacher, and also Neera, we kind of took the people that were in our circle. So we just took the people who had the cool jobs in our circle. I interviewed my son. I interviewed two entrepreneurs. And we have basketball coach on there. We have...
Youtuber, which was the most popular.
Yeah, so...
We also had an EMT. We had a nurse. We had firefighter on there, someone from the military. I interviewed my friend's recruiter. She did that.
Of a tattoo artist.
Oh, okay.
Who is, that came from Brianna. And then she's, she's actually a pretty unique tattoo artist. I think she's a handicapped?
Yes. She is a female one-handed tattoo artist. She owns her own business.
Is it local?
She's at St. Paul. And she's a mother.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So eventually, what we want to do is expand that throughout the teachers in our school and get the people in their circle so that we can... The idea of the website, if we don't get it, that's okay, Lori, if we don't. But the idea of the website is kind of like a one-stop shop. So we want to be able to have all the, I think there's eight career clusters. So just take one, let's take marketing and sales. So we have videos for marketing and sales and just give you more information about that. And then having the interviews connected with that. So if we could get four or five different interviews from people in those industries. So students can, again, research that through their college and career readiness course or research it with their families to give them a better idea of if they want to go into something like this. And then in the video, the questions, as Julia said, are all student-led. And so also with the videos, we want to be able to hook, to connect our resources that we have inside Fridley Middle School in our media center. And so Brianna is going to talk more about how the media center is going to play a part in delivering some of those resources.
All right. You'll have to forgive me. I'm a script reader. Libraries play an essential function in our communities writ large. Public libraries are some of the last remaining public spaces in our communities, and they are not merely places to discover new books, new voices, or new perspectives, but they also provide essential services that support our community, from homework help workshops for our young people to programs helping our unhoused neighbors and anything in between. Similarly, academic libraries serve their student and staff population not just through access to course reserves or hosting professional development workshops, seminars, and all management, or in all manner of programming, but they foster a sense of community amongst their people. So it naturally follows that the media centers and libraries that serve our K-12 scholars should emulate these larger institutions and ensure that each scholar has equitable access to the foundations for success before they graduate. By partnering with the career and college readiness and emphasizing preparedness, inquiry, and curiosity, Fridley Middle School's media center is one step closer to achieving that goal. In leveraging the media center's extant resources, including the space, an increasingly diverse collection of reading materials and accessible technologies, we too can support our community of learners and begin to instill in our learners a sense that the media centers, libraries, and other institutions of information and memory in their communities are for them. Libraries are more than the books on their shelves. They are sites for change. Though in the early stages of our partnership and stymied as we all are by COVID-19, the media center has made targeted steps towards digital visibility through creating, sorry, resource lists available to scholars through both Destiny, their online catalog, and as well as a Google site that focus on each of the six career fields. Since we're not going to see the site, I'll give you kind of an overview of the site map. But the homepage starts out with a video that stretches what's your curiosity and goes on to sort of describe what the site is about and show a visual site map and offer some information just on different types of professional col-, or two-year colleges, HBCUs, women's colleges, and in between. Following that, the additional tabs, there is each one tab dedicated to one of the six career fields. And within that, you'll find a resource list of books that are related to the field, either directly or indirectly, and that might spark curiosity in our learners. Those are also followed by a sort of list or a rundown of the courses that are available at Fridley High School that might interest them if they wanted to pursue that career. So yeah, as I said, each page of the site offers links, information, profession spotlights, and high school courses available. It also has links out to other relevant sites, including the Get Ready site, the library catalog, high school registration guide, and sort of some fun videos. I've also been utilizing in-person displays. They're an excellent way to engage users with new content. And while present in a limited capacity now, they aspire to link professionals in different careers, professionals in our communities ideally, but currently I'm working with famous professionals, if you will, and link them to the texts foundational to their growth as individuals and within their profession, the texts that inspired them and the texts that sparked a passion in them. This content is also present on the media center resource site under what are they reading and is a dynamic resource with links to interviews and texts within Destiny. To really make the most of this partnership, though, the hope that we share going forward is that we can build the media center's collection of print, digital, and audio resources to support professional inquiry in our learners across curricula, co-plan and co-lead instruction sessions, host events, demonstrate the benefit of library services for professional development at all ages, prevent library anxiety from holding our scholars back, and encourage our learners to explore emerging and non-traditional paths. Thank you. I'll hand it back to Jason, I believe.
So we have, we have a couple ideas moving forward. Julia, you want to start with the first one?
Sure. Yes. So something, an idea that I'm developing. I'm currently getting my master's at Hamlin University for literacy instruction, and I am learning all about student-driven courses. So I would really like to have our eighth graders really design the college and career course for themselves. I would be there to support with topics and resources, but I really want them to own this because it's their future. It's their interests, and I don't want to feel like I'm feeding them information that they're not interested in. So I'm hoping to develop a course, especially for our eighth graders, that they can really drive their education and take it in the direction that they want to and build that motivation inside of them.
And the other idea that we came up with is shown, it's a student-led career fair, very similar to how we do History Day in getting people from the community to come and judge a career that a student has done research on and has presented. And hopefully getting different local businesses that our students are interested in, even, maybe even working or interning so that we can just get them more included into our community. Now it's time for us to say goodbye. But we, thank you for your time. We appreciate your support as we build a strong college and career-focused school culture. Questions?
I do have a question. You had mentioned that, I believe, on your website, you have six different career fields. Not to put you on the spot, but what are, I'm curious to know what they are.
It goes off at the career pathways, sort of circular wheel. So you have like human services, information technology. There's the science and technology field. There's business management and administration. I think I'm missing one. It's the arts. I believe it's the arts. Yes. That is, yeah. There's a tab dedicated to each to sort of make navigation within those a little bit, you know, fewer clicks.
Sure.
Means a lot more to kids, so they can navigate inside what it is that they're looking for within those tabs. But it would be easier to search on a surface level based on the site map.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions as well. Thank you, Jason, for sharing this and the team. Actually, I think my questions are for, I got a quick question for Brianna. Is it?
Yes.
You used the term library anxiety.
Yes.
What is that? Because last I heard, you don't have to learn the Dewey Decimal System anymore, so what's there to worry about?
No, library anxiety, it often stops people from using...
Library anxiety is sort of a phenomenon that often stops anybody. It doesn't have to be a student, but it could be anybody in the community from actually heading into a library or even asking a reference question or speaking to somebody who is there exclusively to help them find what it is they're looking for. And so if we sort of acclimate children to an environment where they're exposed to libraries, where it's part of their curricula every day, and it's not just a place that they go to read fun books, which is great and awesome. But what we really want to see is, is the space sort of ingrained, sort of, a sense of their community going forward in academic libraries, public libraries, special libraries, museums, archives, whatever it is. It's all there to serve them. So that's the sort of focus with that.
Thank you. And then my second question, Julie, right?
Julia.
Julia, sorry. In the career stuff for the eighth graders and career planning and the course design, the one question that comes to mind in that situation, that's very cool, is kids don't know what they don't know. So if you ask my son, he's going to say, "I want to design video games," okay? But there's a million other things. So how do you help them know what they don't know?
No, definitely. That is a great question. I will continue to support with materials. And, you know, they can still take the different career quizzes to figure out their interests and how can point that direction. Also hoping to build from, you know, we start with our fifth graders and build it on up so they'll have that wealth of information by the time they get to eighth grade. It won't be something that I'll be able to develop for this year. And so hopefully, next year with the seventh grade knowledge that they have, because they also had college and career readiness the year before, they'll have built up enough of that self-sufficiency and information to make some of those plans. But I'm, you know, helpful. I'm forever a helper as a teacher. So any student who is feeling lost or unsure of their future, we can explore a few different things. Definitely don't want to limit anyone.
Yeah.
I might be able to follow up, but I'm going through some pretty intense collection development, and I'm looking into doing sort of, I guess you could call it speculative professions or the intersections where we see sort of like, you know, different career fields where they intersect and how those sort of create new opportunities for people. And I feel that often happens through exposure, through something that they love or find curiosity through in the library, so.
Yeah, I have a comment. First of all, you mentioned in the beginning that you are all new to Fridley. So welcome to Fridley, and we hope someday you'll be the senior members of the staff, and we look forward to that you stay along. So that's something that we are happy to have you here. And also the fact that you are working on the future and careers, and that's something very exciting part of our young future leaders. So I think you're in a good place. So my question is, as the students graduate from the middle to the high school, what do they take along with them to the high school? And what, how's the connection between the middle and the high school in terms of discontinuity of their educational journey?
Do you want to speak more about the grant and how they process through with math?
Definitely not the grant. But...
Doesn't it continue with the ninth grade?
Yes. You talked about the Get Ready. Yeah, so I don't even know where I want to start with this. But so Get Ready is, we have a grant with the Get Ready Foundation. And they, this is their last year in our building. They stay with the students for four years, and they graduate to the high school. So we tried to team up with Neera for her, basically her last year and figure out how can we make what she does sustainable in the middle school. And that's where we came up with the Virtual Career Week and kind of expanding on that. I don't feel like I'm answering your question. What's the last part of your question?
Just kind of the continuum of the, you know, processes that they have started going to the high school. How do they take it along with them?
Yes.
How does that prepare them for high school?
Yep. And so on, again, on the website, and I hope that you guys can, on your spare time, go take a look at that, at the website. But on the website, we have, we did our eighth grade registration a little differently this year. We ran registration through our encore classes because the ninth graders, the soon-to-be ninth graders can only take, only pick elective classes. And so Get Ready created a pathway video that highlights every career cluster and also the classes that align with the career cluster that they should take in their high school years. So we're constantly teaching and, again, giving that accessible excellence to our kids. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask a question that goes along with that. So Get Ready, that program, the gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he came and spoke to us. And are you saying that's ending? Is the Get Ready still going to? So I kind of think of you guys as like the first tier, talking about college and career readiness, and they take those classes. And then when they jump up to high school, they work with?
Matthew.
Matthew on Get Ready?
Yes.
Okay. So that's all continuing to flow together?
It's all continuing to flow. It's just the last cohort in the middle school are the eighth graders.
Transition to high school.
Yes.
All right. I just want to thank you all. You did such a fantastic job.
Yes, thank you.
So impressive then. I have not met you. Hey, hi.
I know. I was like that. I've seen you. We've emailed. Hi, it's nice to meet you.
Also wanted, the captain of steerers' ship keeps moving forward and forward on her seat in the back there. But Amy Cochran, I just want to let you know she's defending her dissertation next week. So you'll know her as Dr. Cochran after next week. So I just wanted to give her a shout out.
Fantastic.
Yay! Congratulations.
I'll seek her help.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you. Yes, welcome. Next, we're going to be moving on to business action items. And Dr. Heil, I skipped over because there's two for Barbie. Does she have? I mean, it's the exact same thing for the revised budget under superintendent and staff reports, and then the...
We can come back to her.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. She's like, "It's my turn." I just want to take time for this week to acknowledge, actually, our school board. So next week, February 22nd and February 26th is the Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And so we have a resolution for you. So whereas Fridley School District 14 recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Fridley School Board District 14 appreciates that vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. Whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law. Whereas our school board members selfishly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas the local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. And so now therefore be it resolved that the Fridley School District 14 recognizes and salutes the members of the Fridley School District 14 School Board by proclaiming the week of February 22nd to the 26th of 2021 as School Board Recognition Week. week of February 22nd to the 26th of 2021 as School Board Recognition Week. So I have a certificate for you, and you also had a cookie at your seat.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Heil.
Thank you, Dr. Heil.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heil.
Thank you. And now apparently we need to approve that as a motion. Would somebody like to brag yourselves up? Somebody start.
Seems painfully self-serving.
I'm so sorry. And then I think, I don't know...
But since I'm the new guy...
It's roll call?
I move, we accept that resolution.
Well, and then we have roll call, so is it a resolution? Yep, so, all right, Ross, Mr., Mr. Meisner, and a second?
A second.
All right. Yep. And since that's a resolution, we will call the roll. Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnap.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
If I must.
I know. Ms. Peruido, I say yes. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I needed that giggle.
And then that passes, yay! Okay. Moving on along, let's move on to, um, now, Ms., okay, now I'm going to say this right, Ms. Rossler.
Raceler.
Raceler. So close. I'll work on that.
Board Chair Peruido, Board Members, and Superintendent Heil, tonight I'll be visiting with you regarding the revised budget for our fiscal year 2020-21, well, fiscal year. So the, the presentation just kind of walks you through where we've been and where we're going and, and how, how things are going to look. So what you're seeing here, this is our adopted budget that the board approved on June 16th at the, at the meeting that was held prior to July 1, as is by statute, we must have a, an adopted budget by that time. And so you're seeing what the expectation was. I think it's important for all of us to remember that the pandemic had started a few months prior to this, and the method in which the budget was created was to assume that we were not in a pandemic. So that's how the original budget was created. Since that time, we've completed our FY '20 audit, we've onboarded new staff, we welcome students for the new year, we reviewed our current year projections, analyzed the budget to the actuals, we implemented new methods of teaching, learning, and working, and we are persevering through this pandemic. Changes to the budget assumptions in our revenue assumptions, we did review the tax levy information, federal revenues, state aides, basic and categorical, and revised those calculations based on any changes that we saw. We did include some of our COVID, we did include our COVID revenues, the COVID relief fund, the elementary and secondary school emergency fund, round one, as well as the governor's emergency education relief, again, round one. In the expenditure assumptions, we took into account the variances in the prior year with our audit, we revised our salaries and benefits, and any known staffing changes were taken into account, and then we did include our COVID-related expenditures as well. In the enrollment, we did decrease our projected enrollment for the current year. The original budget was based on 2824 ADM, and we are now looking at 2762 as we created that revised budget. This next slide just shows what our enrollment trends have looked like over the last few years. We do exclude our VPK kids because that funding did not come into place until 2017, so allowing us to have an apples-to-apples type of comparison, then we, we exclude those. So again, the adopted budget was based on using that 2,824 ADM count, and now we're looking at 2,762. But it's important to note that we did lose students in our younger, in our early grades, so we lost some elementary students, but we have gained middle school, high school students. And that's actually, we actually were very buffered, so we have seen, because, because the funding is based on pupil units, the, the, the grades K through 1, or K through 6 equals a 1.0, and grades 7 through 12 is a 1.2 in funding, and so due to that, we were, we were very much buffered in not really looking at a major revenue loss, which is very, very exciting. The adopted budget, we were looking at just the general fund summary, the adopted budget, we were looking at a 7.6 projected fund balance, and then due to fewer expenditures due to COVID and just a better audit, and then we had, the, the audit results were much better than what we had anticipated, we are now looking to have a 7.4% fund balance with our revised budget. We do practice conservating budget methodologies, and we have experienced better outcomes than what we had anticipated when our audits are complete. So this is just a, a quick peek at what all the funds will look like at the end of the fiscal year based on a revised budget. So the general fund will end in a negative 343,000. Our food service is also going to go into a deficit, as well as our community services projecting to, to have a deficit. It's important to note that we still have a very hefty fund balance. Our minimum fund balance in our policy states that we must be at 7%, and what we're projecting is 7.4, so we're still well within our range of what's acceptable. The food service fund balance also has a, a very positive balance, and so they will be able to withstand a loss without issue. And as we know, our community service fund, we were projecting that we would have a loss, and we are continuing to project that loss. It's larger than what we had first anticipated, but we do know that we've got strategies to mitigate that loss moving forward. It may take us, you know, more than just one year to recoup some of those, as all districts, community service funds have, have seen a hit, and so we are very optimistic that we will again see positive fund balance in the community service as well. So that's the presentation. There are any questions that I can help answer? Any questions? Wonderful job, and I will accept a motion if somebody would like to approve that.
I will, I will move to approve that, adjust the budget. Second?
We have a motion by Meisner, seconded by Carnap. Any discussion? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we will move on. Okay, perfect. We are going to move on to Mr. Isaacson, who is going to talk, second readings, please.
Thank you, Board Chair Peruido, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. I present to you the second reading of Policy 498, Evaluation of Certified Staff. It was a long walk across the floor to tell you, there are no changes since the first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
I know, thank you so much for all that. And I'll bring up Ms. Raceler. Yay! She's going to say the same thing. Board Chair Peruido, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, I'm here to let you know that there are no changes to the policies 701.1, 704, 705, 707 since the first reading. Awesome. Thank you both. And is there a motion to approve all of those readings with no changes?
Motion to approve all.
Thornton, to approve, and second?
Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Thornton, seconded by Mr. Meisner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we are going to move on to approve our consent agenda, which is our routine action items, including minutes of the regular board work session, the board meeting, the board work session held on January 19th, and the work session held on February 2nd, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, resignations and retirements, and education identity and access management resolution. And if there is, if somebody would like to make a motion to accept that?
Motion moved.
I'm tapped in.
Motion by Adam?
Second.
Second, by Stark? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to written information with first readings of policies. Ms. Raceler.
Board Chair Peruido, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, I actually have something to say this time. So the, the first policy that we're looking at is Policy 709, it's the Student Transportation Safety Policy. The changes that we are looking at for this one are included in Section 2, Item B, number 4. We are simply not specifying particular grades that are receiving instruction for operating a motor vehicle, but noting that those, anyone that is receiving those types of drivers' training, instruction, do understand how to operate their motor vehicle in the vicinity of a school bus. And the other change then that we are recommending is on Section 10, where it talks about the, the Director of Transportation, Fridley Public Schools doesn't have a Director of Transportation, we have a Transportation Coordinator. So we are noting that change in Section 10 of the policy, and we also did include the Minnesota statute in that area as well. So those are the main recommendations that we have for that policy. And the other policy that we are introducing, it's a brand-new policy for Fridley Public Schools, is Policy Number 718, District Credit Card Program. MSBA does not have a template for this type of policy, but the Office of the State Auditor does recommend that each school district have some type of a policy in place if they are allowing credit card usage in the district, and we do. And so as we are reviewing our purchasing processes and procedures, we wanted to ensure that we also had a credit card policy in place so that we were able to also, you know, effectively put those processes and procedures in place as well.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We will move on to reports from school board members. Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Board Powers Meeting, held on January 20th. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Chair Peruido. This meeting was the first meeting of the new board members and new session. So basically, it was introduction of the new members and election of board officers. So I will share more details of the workings of this joint board powers in future meetings.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, held on February 3rd. Ms. Stark?
We discussed superintendent interviews for 916, which will be, I have to say for 916 because somebody misunderstood and really panicked last time we talked about superintendent interviews, and I had to assure them that it wasn't for Dr. Heil, so, um, yeah, there was a frantic, what was that about? So the first round of interviews will be March 17th, with the second round of interviews being March 24th. We also heard from Jill Stewart Keller, who's the Assistant Director and Principal of 916 Career and Tech. She was joined by two students to share the benefits of the career and technical program for both of them. The students also shared their experience and gratitude for attending Career and Tech while in high school. And then, um, we also went over the audit report, retirements, and where's the other? There we go. The Assistant Superintendent presented information on creating a work group and a stakeholder group to review the use of school resource officers at Northeast Metro 916. He spoke of the creation of the groups, the potential areas to be addressed, and the timeline for the work to be done. A presentation will be given to the school board in December 2021, and I did volunteer to be a part of that group. So as we move forward, I will share those updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting, held on February 5th, 2021. Mr. Carnap?
Thank you, Chair Peruido. We heard from Minnesota Senator Chamberlain and Minnesota Representative Devine, or Dafne, rather, basically some discussions about our budgetary shortfalls throughout the state due to the pandemic and how to deal with that. There was some brief discussion about the free and reduced lunch protocols and how that can affect our, our budgets in our respective districts. And then lastly, we had some conversation about the constitutional amendment that'll certainly be garnering some more attention in the coming months.
Thank you. Last Schools for Equity in Education Meeting, held on February 12th, 2021. Dr. Heil?
Thank you, Chair Peruido, and School Board Members. Representative Jim Dafne was also at the C Committee, so he stated as well as what Board Member Carnap had mentioned, and we also had a speaker, Dr. Kim Given, she works with CARRY, and she, this institution looked at how the pandemic has impacted our students, and the main errors were through health and economic well-being, students, excuse me, student, staff, and family in our community, through food insecurity and mental health for our staff and students, and just that the disparity between disability, poverty, and race has grown even larger. Thank you.
Thank you. On to important future board dates, we have the Fridley Public School Board Work Session coming up on March 2nd, the next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting on March 3rd, Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting, March 5th, Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Board Powers Meeting, March 10th, and the next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be on March 16th. And would somebody like to make a motion for us to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Thornton, seconded by Mr. Meisner. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that adjourns us at 8:37. Thank you.